legislator Burns.
Here.
legislator Gilbert.
Here.
legislator Chartrand.
Here.
legislator Morehan.
Here.
legislator Calder has been excused. legislator Osborne.
Here.
legislator King.
Here.
legislator Dahlhoff.
Here.
Would everyone please stand for the indication when the plug is later halfway, would you need us in the indication? Absolutely. Father, as always, we're thankful for the blessings you bestow upon us, many of which we don't even realize, but all of which we appreciate. Father, I wish you'd reach down and help our people in need and help us to be able to help them. Give us the guidance to do that. And Lord, would you please put your healing and helping hand on those that are sick? Guide them through their troubles. And put your protective hand on those that are caring for them. The family, the friends, the caregivers, the medical staff. Let them be able to continue to do the good work that they're doing for all of our time. And Lord, would you please guide us in our decisions? As always, we need your help and we appreciate your help. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Page five to the plan.
The plan is to the land of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice in all.
Okay, tonight we have a public hearing on the 2022 Tennessee Lewis County budget. We're going to open that public hearing now and offer approval to the floor to anyone who would like to find comments. So was there anyone here that would like to comment on the 2022 channel budget? Let's start with that. Could you come up and please state your name for the record?
Megan Harney. Good evening. I'm Megan Harney, Director of Level Three Library, and I'm here with some representatives of libraries in Lewis County and from North Country Library System. We want to thank you for including the funding request from Lewis County Libraries in the 2022 budget. The funding will make a difference across our county through each library. We'd like to thank Mr. Hathaway, serving District One, which includes Harrisville Free Library; Ms. Verkler, serving District Two, which includes Beaver Falls Library; and Krogan Free Library; Mr. Burns, serving District Three; Mr. Gilbert, serving District Four; Mr. Chartrand, serving District Five, which includes Level Three Library; Ms. Morehan, serving District Six; Mr. Calder, serving District Seven, which includes William H. Bush Memorial Library in Martinsburg; and B. Elizabeth Strong Memorial Library in Turin; Mr. Dahlhoff, serving District Eight, which includes Constableville Library, Lyons Falls Library, and Osceola Public Library; Mr. Osborne, serving District Nine, which includes Burningham Greg Reading Center; and Mr. King, serving District Ten, which includes Port Lyden Community Library and Town of Lewis Library in West Lyden. All of your districts include library patrons served by these twelve libraries. The funding will provide for technology costs that enable us to effectively loan materials and give our patrons access to hundreds of thousands of titles through interlibrary loan, provide Internet access, including free and accessible Wi-Fi, have public access computers and other devices available, maintain the digital collection that's available 24/7, offer printing, copying, and scanning, and provide access to digital resources that cover many topics, including workforce readiness and educational enrichment. We're grateful for your service to our county. Thank you for including Lewis County Libraries in the 2022 budget, and thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you. It's been a pleasure. 我们会把它打开，然后我们继续。reports to the Financial Rules Committee per Rule Six, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Financial Rules Committee has met, and they recommend to waive rules to act upon late resolutions.
Need a motion? Dick, second by Andrea. Any discussion? Call in favor? Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Presentation of petitions, communications, and notices.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Two resolutions were received, one from Schumong County in opposition to end predatory court fees act, and the other from Seneca County opposing Governor Hokel's closure plan on public safety, economic, and environmental grounds. A thank you card was received from the Town of Diana Museum thanking the Board of Legislators for the proclamation commemorating museums. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Reports of county officers and departments.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ryan Mooney submitted the September and October 2021 Sealer, Weights, and Measures Activity Reports, which have been placed on file with the Clerk of the Board. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Reports of standing committees. Tom, would you start us off with financial rules?
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have nothing to report this time.
Any questions for Tom? If not, we'll move on to Jerry with General Services Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The only thing I have is we've been waiting on some information, and Ryan and Jackie have got it to us, so we'll discuss it at the committee meeting. Everybody should have had a copy. That's all, man. Thank you. And that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Any questions for Jerry? Thank you, Jerry. And we'll move on to Andrea with Health and Human Services.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have nothing left to report.
Any questions for Andrea? Move on to Dick as the Board's Rep on Hospital Board Managers.
Since we had a meeting Tuesday, Jerry was here, Paulie Kelly was here, that's all covered. Some of you may know we've been looking for a chief operating officer trying to replace Michelle Prince. We made a selection and the individual turned us down. We put a range of salary available in so that you know what the range was going in at individual clients, so we're going to go back out. The group that was searching for us is under contract to do that, so hopefully we can get another list. That's all I have.
Any questions for Dick?
Is the COO on or not?
No, Michelle Prince will be in by the 1st and the 15th of December. Well, Jerry's available.
Does the Russian genitalia night come on me?
Yeah. Put your app in, Jerry.
You have to, right? Yeah, that's on my league.
You think you had fun here.
Okay, we'll move on to the county manager report, right?
Just real briefly, Joan, can you put the light real quick? I just wanted to share some photos.
Billy, get a clock and briefly?
This is briefly, there's only four photos. We have had quite the process with the Turin brick block building, but all things considered, this is about as fast as your local government can move. The building burned and marched, and it will be cleaned up by the end of the month, and that's pretty good really by any measure. So here's the progress as of yesterday. Joan and I went down and took some photos. So it really is coming along. You can see it's actually a decently sized lot. When the building was kind of sprawling with many little additions and things off the back, once it's all clear, you can tell that it's a fairly good sized lot. So hopefully primed for redevelopment in the future. But so there you go. That is the current status, and we'll bring some more pictures back once it's totally cleaned up, and then hopefully redeveloped in the future. So I think great work by the county, the town, the village, and the development authority of North Country. Everybody worked together to move this along quite quickly. So that's my report. Lastly, go ahead, Joan. Can you turn that off too? Committee meetings, so Jerry, you had mentioned committee meetings. We will be starting a new term January 1st. We typically try not to have a lot of day-to-day business bleed over from December of the term that's ending into the new term. We have done a decent job trying to get everyone's business, all the farmer head's business, kind of condensed and wrapped up. There may not be a need for committee meetings in December. We already have two board meetings scheduled for December. We've got one on the 7th and one on the 23rd. So I was going to just pitch the idea of foregoing our December committee meetings if you guys wanted to. If you would like to meet, we will always have plenty of material to present and discuss. But in terms of board actions, we've tried to kind of wane that down so that the new term starts fresh without a lot of bleed over from December. So just a discussion.
Is there anything pressing that would have to slide to January if we didn't have the committee meetings, or?
Not that I can think of. That's why I wanted to get Patrick in, you know, and give you guys a thorough update on the building project. You know, there's really not much that is going to leak over. I mean, this singing waters issue, we want to, you know, certainly something we want to talk about, but that's not urgent, you know what I mean? So I don't know, we certainly can have committee meetings. I just was going to pitch that idea. You've already got two commitments in December. If you wanted to tailor it down, we could. And if you want to meet, we can too. So we've got half an hour until the public hearing's over, so I fear we could discuss it.
I like the suggestion myself, as long as there's nothing that's going to stop it.
Yeah, if there's nothing pressing, I mean, rather than bringing in two new legislators and have stuff already in process, they can start right off new with what's going on.
You know, they would invite them to December meetings, so they'd be doing our regular agenda.
Yeah, they typically are invited to the December 23rd meeting, and then we would schedule, Joan and Cassandra and I will be reaching out to do an orientation with them sometime in December, anyway.
So the only thing I can think of is that Jackie just received notification today that they are considering having a SNOB run in the spring of 2022. So we will probably have some meetings to work through that with SOBALS in December. I can't think of why we wouldn't have to make any decisions, I don't think, in December, but that process will begin shortly, so that's the only thing that we'll probably...
And we can send out an email update.
Or we can keep everybody, everyone up to speed with emails, hopefully, so. Okay, the district board's your report?
Yeah, I mean, what's the verdict on the committees? Well, just to be clear, we've happily put together a program, you know, that's not an issue, but just considerations to, you know, to wind down business, so whatever you guys think.
If there is business that comes up, we could schedule for the last meeting, is that the 21st, 23rd?
21st.
So we could meet in our...
It's the committee meeting, the 21st.
No, that's the last meeting of the year.
The board meeting is the 23rd.
Okay.
Yeah, in the morning.
So my point is the 23rd, if we have something that comes up, we can meet in our...
The only things that would be coming through in December that you haven't seen already are some renewal agreements that some of the departments have just worked out in terms of getting final numbers, but they're basically renewals. There's no real new activity from any departments on deadlines or...
No. So the other reason is the way the dates are falling this year, the 21st would be our committee meeting, and the 23rd, two days later, would be our final board meeting where we're planning to do a luncheon. So for the folks that work, that's two days out of the week that you'd be, you know, have to clear your schedule, so. Which, again, that's up to you guys.
I'll make a motion that we suspend the regular committee meetings for December.
I'll say.
Any further discussions? All in favor?
All right.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Okay, county treasurer reporting here.
So now I've got like 15 minutes, so this should be great.
That doesn't mean.
You have to hear money yourself for that 15 minutes.
Thanks, Jerry. I do not have a report, but I have an update and some information based on a question I had about the property tax auction. We haven't talked about it in a little while, but that process has been very murky because of the state and the requirements of the pandemic and foreclosure, we're not allowed, and addictions are not allowed, et cetera, et cetera. So we have to go through a court approval process for all properties that would be auctioned off. We did not get a date from the court. The date the court gave us is November 29th, so that was past our expected auction date, and really just does not give us any room to move forward with that in this current year. So we made the decision that we will not have an auction for this year's properties. We'll just roll everything into next year. We also are planning to change our timing a little bit for next year, so the foreclosure process, our deadlines in February will not change, but we're going to push the auction date out until probably July or August. And as far as properties, we were down to a list of 14 that could have possibly been auctioned this year, so those will get pushed until next year. You know, the good news, we've had 15 since our deadline in February, 15 that have been repurchased. So that's what we like to see. We like people to be able to pay for and keep their property. So, and I think that's, from what I see from other treasurers, that's kind of a typical trend. They're definitely seeing lower properties going all the way through the process in the last year or two. I think people have sources of revenue, so they've been able to pay their taxes, which is a good thing. So would have been a pretty small auction anyway. That's an update.
So, Eric, the next auction will be 2022 July or 2023?
2022 July, July, August, yes.
Okay, so do we have any other business? We can't do the resolutions, Jerry. Is there any other business that we have that we might want to discuss?
Do you want to discuss singing waters, Jerry? Because we won't be able to do it at committee in December.
We can, if the committee wants to, if people want to do it. I mean, we had talked about this quite a few months ago, and we were hoping to get it last month, and we're getting it. Jackie and I have talked a little bit and stuff. We're going ahead and putting the campsite back in, going ahead and having a bathroom, running water, showers, hot water, and stuff like that. And what I was, we had a little bit of discussion before whether we wanted to put some type of daily charge on it and some rules and regulations, because, you know, as we're doing this, it looks like we're going to have to have someone up there for garbage. We're going to have additional expense for probably heating the hot water and stuff like that, the water pump, which we didn't have before. And somebody is going to be up there every few days collecting garbage every day. So by putting what the other parks are charging in comparison, for one, what we'll do is we won't take away from the other parks that are in for business. And the other thing is by putting a charge on it, we may be able to poof some of our expenses. So that was my thought process and this and that. So it's up for discussion with everybody to see, you know, I'm off in left field, or that's something that we ought to consider doing.
So did you thought that us charging maybe rates that private businesses doing the same type thing would keep us, would keep them whole, or hopefully?
It would have a tendency to keep them whole, plus also that we're creating something like this additional thing in the camping business that's going to cost us more money to operate. So, and the goal's not to pay for everything, but offset as much as we can for the reasonable cost. So like you said, I think if we're free, then we're going to hurt the other campsites. If we're within their range for the same facility, then, you know, hopefully we protect them too.
And we should, yes.
Stuff, so.
And maybe when people pay, they will be hopeful to keep it clean.
Well, and that's another thing, you know, we're going to have to have someone go in there, you know, I, that's got to be worked out. Are they going in there every other day to prove up, or?
Are we hiring someone for that decision?
Well, we're going to have to find someone for some...
We don't know yet. Okay, we don't know yet what we're doing.
So that's, you know, we either got to use somebody we have, or we may have to hire someone.
Okay.
But it's going to take away from what they're doing. So, you know, it's not 100%, but I think it's a start. So that's why, you know, I asked for this information, so everybody has it. And, you know, see if it's something we want to do.
I would volunteer Jackie to do that. So Jackie?
No.
You're hiring a new position?
We do have two new positions under Forestry. But, you know, with the idea that we're going to need to finalize some stuff this coming year, both are seasonal employees. But, you know, that's not just for singing waters, that's for boundary lines, that's for other stuff as well.
Jackie, is there software out there for like online registration that we could adopt to try and handle some of the administrative burden that would be?
We talked about doing a job form similar to our permit system, or it's online, you fill it out, and it gets the payments online. But we haven't talked to the clerks to see if that's something that would go through them. Or, you know, that part has, it's just, the idea has been thrown around, so.
We should have online payment and a lockbox, probably on site, you know? When Jackie and I talked, when we were putting the budget together, we figured somebody every day during the week would need to be swinging by at the very least to collect the lockbox and check the bathrooms. They might not need to be cleaned every day, but checked every day, definitely.
But I guess the thing is, why does somebody need to check a lockbox? I mean, if we do, we put your credit card in it, and if they do a lockbox, they're not going to get a permit issued anyway, so how do you know where it comes from? So I guess what I had visualized, at least for discussion, just like the sole minimum, whatever, whatever we're charging, how many days you're staying, you pay with a credit card, it's filled out on that thing that you have a permit from here to here. They print it out themselves and bring it with them, stick it in the protected box, and then we don't have to worry a lot whether someone's going to break into the lockbox later in the day and stuff like that. So in other words, it's paid for, and I'm not throwing the clerk in there. If it's got the worst, they didn't have a computer, maybe the clerk could take the transaction during the business hours.
What if being heard of to lease this out to a third party to manage and operate?
Yeah, not unheard of at all, no. That would be an interesting perspective. We have to see what the cost would be. Yeah, that's interesting. So we're going to mow enough there, we're going to have bathroom cleanup, I mean, but, you know, we've invested into a nice county asset. By the time it's done, it's really, I think, going to enhance our recreational options. It's bridge access only, so you're not going to be able to get a vehicle across. There's no power, so it's not going to be RVs. It's really kind of a park that will be designed for folks that are doing ATV, biking, kind of, you know, recreation, that kind of can set up a rough tent and have a nice, you know, bathhouse. So, yeah.
A tent?
Well, a tent, anytime.
That's great.
Not for me, Jerry.
Well, you know, along that line, are we going to limit this policy to just singing waters, or is it going to include all the county land, the parking areas for ATV access?
Because we have people that set up...
We've had toy haulers already using our parking lots, you know, overnight, and right now it's illegal according to the county camping policy.
Well, if we're charging for one, we may need to consider if people are using the other.
And they're right down the road from each other too, so.
Correct.
Okay.
It may be a little bit cheaper because you don't have, well, you don't have to shower and stuff.
I think the first thing we wanted to, the first hurdle was, are we going to charge at all? And it seems like there's consensus that we should charge something. So let's use that as a basis to try to build a full policy, Jackie, that applies. I think, I think you're right, Larry, it should apply to both the areas that we have that people stay in, any future areas that we might develop. And then maybe it's worth exploring Lisa's idea too, if there's companies out there that would do that. We've got some work to do between now and hopefully August. We'll see when it gets all done, but.
Well, I'm glad I started in the spring, and we finally get to it. Thank you.
There's a private came through, Jackie, up on Beaver River, right? From here with the 101, it's a soft maple area.
I don't know if that's private or is that for...
That's what I'm saying, but we might want to check with them, because they have a half a day person, I think, that comes in every day. And I think with the remoteness of this one, that might not be a bad idea to have eyes on the side. The other comment I'd have is the hot water, again, with the remoteness, if you don't charge for that, it's going to be a cost. Because I don't think there's natural gas there, so now you're talking propane, oil, or electric, because none of them are real cheap.
That's why we were talking with the permit and charge, that are...
No, that's what I'm saying. And then whetstone for seniors, I don't know if it's 60, 62, or 65, but for seniors, Monday through Friday, non holidays, there's no charge. Just for that.
They didn't tell me that, but I...
I know, they leave it out all the time, so.
I'm not seeing it.
The other thing is, I don't like reserve America.
I've heard it, it's not, yeah.
Okay, that's all I have.
So we do need to have a more thoughtful, comprehensive policy that's going to apply here. But I think it's a good start. We can take some feedback, and then we will have to run through General Services. It'll just be without Jerry, even though he's the one that wanted to get this done.
Well, no, I think it needs to be discussed.
I'm going to forward an ad hoc committee, and I have their own...
I appreciate the opportunity, because the thing is, I mean, you think about it, we've got people invested in accounting, what the certification is, we have a new campsite going. I don't think we ought to be in competition. So if we're charging a price, the choice is where you want to go. You're going to be close to the same. So we're not really taking away from anybody. It's like us going out and building motel, and we got motels that are full. So if you put, I think it'll help everybody. So we won't be taking away from the ones that are trying to make ends meet.
I think in here it says the homesteaders stopped at Whittaker, as some people up there started charging, so there are benefits to that.
Yeah, we've had that in the past. Well, up there, people have gone sales on it. So get as many people a chance to use it if they want to.
Yeah, to Dick's point, unfortunately, I think we're going to have problems, or we're going to have to put in, because there could be a fee system, otherwise there's no way of controlling somebody just driving up the road coming in, taking a shower.
Yeah, well, that's true.
Yeah.
Showers from seven to nine, you go up there and open the showers. Showers, seven to nine, so you'll go up there from seven till nine to open them, so they can shower and then lock the bag off.
If I don't make it, I'm gonna start without me.
Wherever he gets there.
I don't like either of you.
Oh, okay. How about doing one?
Okay. What else do we have? Take a five-minute recess.
We have like a minute.
Okay. We can do the other resolutions except the budget. Is that work?
We can do the late resolution.
Okay.
That's Resolution Number 297. Resolution awarding bid and authorizing agreement between the County of Lewis and KT Construction and Consulting Company for professional services as resident project representative, construction manager.
So, we'd like to move that, Jerry. Second by Ryan. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Phil and Lisa opposed. And the motion carries. I'm in favor.
Okay, Resolution Number 294. This is a resolution to amend the 2022 tentative county budget regarding the safe harbor program.
Moved by Lisa, second by Andrea. Discussion.
Mr. Chairman, can I offer an explanation for this?
Sure.
So, before we adopt the budget, we wanted to correct an issue that came in last minute from the state. The first... This is the third year of safe harbor funds. It's basically just passed through money that comes to us from the state for human trafficking. We send it right to Lewis County Opportunities for their domestic violence shelter, basically. But in the first two years of funding, the state mandatory... Mandated that we put it through the Youth Bureau. And now the third year, they're mandating that we put it through TSS. So, no program change, just as long as we're fixing the budget and adopting it tonight, we might as well fix it. So, that's the explanation.
Any other discussions? All in favor?
This is a roll call vote?
No, it's a roll call.
Legislator Shartrund?
Yes.
Legislator Gilbert?
Yes.
Legislator Morehand?
Yes.
Legislator Burns?
Yes.
Legislator Colzer's been excused. Legislator Berkler?
Yes.
Legislator Osborne?
Yes.
Legislator Hathaway?
Yes.
Legislator King?
Yes.
Legislator Dahlhoff?
Yes.
Okay, before we do 295, is... Is there anyone here that would like to comment on the proposed 2022 budget? See no movement? I will close that public hearing and we'll move on to the resolution.
Resolution Number 295. This is a resolution adopting the budget for the fiscal year commencing January 1st, 2022, making appropriations for the conduct of county government and establishing rates of compensation for officers and employees for fiscal year 2022.
Moved by Lisa, second by Jerry. Discussion. All in favor? Roll call.
Legislator Gilbert?
Yes.
Legislator Morehand?
Yes.
Legislator Berkler?
Yes.
Legislator Osborne?
Yes.
Legislator Hathaway?
Yes.
Legislator King?
Yes.
Legislator Burns?
Yes.
Legislator Shartrund?
Yes.
Legislator Colzer's been excused. Legislator Dahlhoff?
Yes.
Resolution Number 296. Assessing and levying amount of tax called for under the county budget as adopted by the Board of Legislators on the 18th day of November, 2021, as provided for under county law. And I would just ask that the county treasurer announce the sum taxable property.
You're looking for the tax levy, right?
Yes, sorry.
Yes, my problem. It is $17,810,000 even. One, seven, eight, one, zero, 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 zero.
Okay, moved by Andrea, second by Lisa. Discussion.
I hope Randy's watching on Lincoln Rule's coming because he's always wanted the 0% increase.
Two out of the last three years.
And now he's gone, I can't see. Welcome, Randy.
Okay. Any further discussion? This is a roll call also.
Legislator King?
Yes.
Legislator Colzer's been excused. Legislator Shartrund?
Yes.
Legislator Burns?
Yes.
Legislator Hathaway?
Yes.
Legislator Berkler?
Yes.
Legislator Gilbert?
Yes.
Legislator Morehand?
Yes.
Legislator Osborne?
Yes.
And Legislator Dahlhoff?
Yes.
Okay. Any other business? Do we need an executive session or something? Motion to adjourn. Dick, second. Lisa, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Can you stand up here?